We can, we definitely look into it.
But you didn't find out whether anybody has the license in the town offices anymore, did you?
No, I didn't even get a chance to talk to Bill about it. It was a crazy week. You saw all that stuff I pumped out.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for taking that off our agenda.
Well, I still need your help to execute it all, but we're going to continue onward and upward.
Yep. Well, I sent you a copy of what I said to Ingrid about the way that I got. I think somebody. But, you know, now that I've successfully moved stuff from my old laptop to the new one, I know that it's really not a hard thing to do.
Judy, you've been doing it for a lot of years, right?
Yeah.
Because I was trying to think of like, who even talks about it besides you?
Um, Jerry at some point did a training session for everybody in the town offices. But I don't know that anybody picked it up. When Jesse was doing IT, um, he may have, but I really don't know. I mean, you know, I, I spent some time with Tom Hines on the phone. He's at the plan, Ulster Planning Department.
Right.
And he, he renewed my understanding of how to make a shape file because I'm also doing a version of the map for the streets, the Complete Streets Committee.
Okay.
And what I've been doing today actually was finishing up a, a map that shows where all the handicap parking is and all the public parking lots, of which there aren't that many. The handicap parking east of the green is actually pretty good. West of the green, not so much. But that's a conversation for me and Bill. For the committee and Bill.
But it's a good one.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
I mean, Tinker Street is impossible.
Oh, yeah. For sure.
That's the main thing because Mill Hill, you've got all kinds of private parking that has handicap parking right off the, right off the curb, and it's not a problem. There's plenty. And the lots, except for co- lower Como, which doesn't have anything.
Hi, James.
Hello, Melissa. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good.
Everything's settling down, James?
Yeah, I had a, my husband had a seven-hour back surgery the day of the last meeting and it was, didn't go so, it was pretty rough, so. Yeah, so we're still in, we're like in week three of recovery from that now, but uh, it's getting there.
Boy.
Daddy. Don't want to rush it. No, we were thinking about you and anything we could.
Yeah, I just completely blanked on the meeting.
That's, hey, life happens.
It just didn't even cross my mind.
Understandably.
Somebody was annoyed at me yesterday because I canceled a poetry discussion because of what was going on in DC.
Yeah, it was hard to have anything going on yesterday, that's for sure.
Seriously.
Just said, no way I'm going to do this. I want, I need to watch television. And uh, only one person was disturbed about it, but there was somebody who was annoyed.
There's always one.
Yeah.
Rough day.
Um, Ashley, if you want to give me screen share, then when the time comes, I can, put the maps up when we need them. I can also put up the Stang map that we got in the email. I've got that handy.
You should be all set to share when you, when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Melissa.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Hi there. Hi, Kristen. How are you?
Good. Thank you. Thank.
Happy New Year, all.
Thank you, everyone, for the cards and gifts and showering of love. I appreciate it.
Okay, it is seven o'clock and uh, we do have a quorum. So I would like to call to order the regular Zoom meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for January 7th. And Melissa, do you have any updates to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay, so under Communications and Announcements, we have an email from Maxine Resnick. And it is in reference to an article in the paper. Um, and our supervisor also said it was an interesting article. And what it is, it's, it's about um, critical environmental areas. Uh, and the article is in mostly about in the town of New Poles, where they've had major applications before the board, Planning Board. And they get halfway down the road and they go through this and that, and then someone brings up that, oh, by the way, this is a critical environmental area. And that starts a whole new set of issues that nobody was planning on. And uh, their issue is that they trying to figure out how much of the town is in a critical environmental area. We ourselves have had something similar, um, as in the uh, Chestnut Hill subdivision, which everybody knew, the applicants knew that it was a wetland and, and there's restrictions. But uh, it would have saved everybody time and effort if they had known it was a critical environmental area. So what I'd like to do in our next uh, workshop meeting is to go over the comprehensive plan in which we've adopted. And within that, um, there are, the issues in the comprehensive plan include environmental issues. But we also have the Hudsonia mapping of our uh, environmental areas. And I think that maybe perhaps we could suggest that the, our committee, the Woodstock um, Committee on uh, Mapping Environmental Areas, which is the National Resource uh, um, mapping.
We have that data, Peter.
Huh?
We have that data.
Right. So maybe we haven't, I, I just reviewed it tonight and we really don't show, even in the Hudsonia mapping, critical environmental areas. So maybe that's something we need to look at.
What Judy's talking about is the NRI. We got it today.
Okay, it's not the same thing as the Hudsonia.
But the Woodstock National Resources Inventory that Julia and Ingrid had done, we got, I have a whole set of the maps and the larger, large, large, taller than me maps.
And I have the MR, the, the maps for the ArcGIS, which I am unpacking and troubleshooting. I haven't gotten through all of them yet.
So the idea is that uh, that if we showed these areas in maps that applicants could see ahead of time, they wouldn't be blindsided halfway through an application by uh, discovering that they're in a critical environmental area. So that was basically the, the gist of what Maxine Resnick was, was showing us in that uh, report. Uh, also on the Communications Announcements, we have a letter from Michael Gordon regarding the Stang application, which we'll be doing very shortly, so we'll, we'll deal with that then. So under Scheduled Business, we have three public hearings and one um, sketch plan review. In the public hearing, we have a uh, a lot line revision and also in the um, sketch plan review, we have a lot line revision. And these are lot line revisions that are a little more complicated. They involve more than one parcel and more than one lot line being added or deleted, which gets a little uh, complicated, but we'll try to get this sorted out. The estate of uh, the first public hearing we have is the estate of Betsy G. Stang and Christine Moschanis, which is Planning Board Case Number 20 dash 0995A. So I'll try to say this so we can follow it. It's an application for a lot line revision to transfer four acres from the Stang parcel, which is parcel 12.2121. And it's originally a 69.04 acre parcel. It's located at 626 Wittenberg Road. And that's going to be transferred to the Moschanis parcel, which is Lot 27, which was originally 2.01 acres. And that's located at 696 Wittenberg Road. And that results in Moschanis parcel being 6.01 acres. Then the other transfer is 14.12 acres from, from a Stang, a separate Stang parcel, which is 63.110, which was originally 26.12 acres, located at 17 Jeanette Lane. And that's being transferred to Lot Number 12.121, which is the original Stang uh, lot at 626 Wittenberg Road. And that results in a total of um, of uh, it came from the 12 acres and it results in a total of 79.16 acres. Uh, and there's some in the R3 in the IFR zoning district. So before I get the applicant to explain the reasons for this, I just first want to read uh, the note from the CEO. And it helps explain it a little bit better. This lot line revision involves three existing parcels of land. The first is referred to as Parcel One, which was the, the Stang. It consists of 26.12 acres and contains the developed home of Betsy Stang. Betsy Stang has passed away. Her son wishes to sell the home, but will first reduce the parcel size to 12 acres. The reduction in size has no impact on any zoning issues. The next parcel is a vacant parcel, also a Stang parcel, which will take the 14-plus acres and combine it, thus increasing the size of this parcel to 79.15 acres. This new larger parcel has a minimum lot width as required for the R8 and R5 zoning districts. There are no related zoning constraints. The third parcel in this revision is a parcel conveyed by Christian Mosamos and is currently a two-acre parcel. The plan is to add four acres from the Stang parcel of 12.121. This plan will only make the existing parcel more compliant with the R5 zoning district with which it resides. There are no zoning issues with this plan. So uh, would the applicant like to explain to the board and the public what their objective is?
I'll go first, uh, because I guess, I'm Robert Stang. I'm um, Matthew's father and uh, Betsy's ex-husband and uh, was involved in this back in the eighties when we acquired it. So um, this is simply put, um, I think you, you, you described it very easily, Peter, much better than I could. There are three parcels. The, the developed house that Betsy occupied is being sold with 12 acres. And the balance of the land is being consolidated into one parcel. And at the same time, um, we're selling four acres to Kristen, who wanted to increase the size of her lot at that end of the uh, vacant 69-acre parcel. I think that's the simplest way to go about it. We're not doing anything with any, you know, subdivisions or plans or anything like that. It's just the straightforward, just the way you described it. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And if Kristen, you want to mention anything, you can go ahead and do so.
Well, the, the first question is, is there any planned development at this point?
No.
New homes?
No, nothing, nothing's, nothing's planned.
Do you want the maps up? Either the drawings that we were sent or the ones that I've got?
Yeah, the newest, uh, the newest uh, plot that we received, because it was updated to show.
Right, we, we, the last time we met, uh, you asked to have certain lines uh, uh, further identified in the chart put on the map. And I think Dan, Dan is on here too. Are you not, Dan, someplace?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan, Dan Fancher is, is very familiar with the uh, drawings and the uh, lots and so on. So can everyone see the, the plan?
Yeah. So does anybody on the board uh, have questions uh, regarding this uh, application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a letter, as I said, uh, from um, Mr. Gordon with ZS Square. And his basic question is, does this additional area added to the first Stang lot change what can be developed or subdivided? And the answer to that really is that that's not before us. When and if ever it came before us for a subdivision, then we would be addressing how many lots could be made, what kind of roads, there are wetlands there, so there would be all that involved. But at this point, we, that is not before us. We're not looking at a subdivision, so. I, I understand, he's asking the question. If he's there, he, he can further ask the question. But basically, this is not an application for a subdivision. Which if it was, we would address all the issues that I think he's concerned about.
I am, you're in. You've addressed my question.
Okay, um, all the points in your letter are, would be considered if it ever came before us for subdivision. So um, if uh, nobody else has any questions.
I have one question, if I may.
Sure.
Um, and it's just a technical point. On the, the map itself, as you know, when you were talking about the streets before you entertained the application, sensitive environmental areas. The portion that fronts Wittenberg Road between my parcel and what is referred to as the Porty parcel, likewise fronting on Wittenberg Road, that is certainly sensitive wetlands. Should that be, is the question designated on this map as wetlands, likewise on any other pieces of the parcel?
If it ever came for, up for a subdivision of any sort or any kind of development, um, then that would, all wetlands would have to be delineated and mapped and put on the map before the board could do it.
I'm just pretty sure at this time, though.
Yeah, you, you can see if, if, you can see on the map that they just put up uh, that that area, the, I think you're talking about Mr. Gordon is right there, right. It's the, shown as wetlands, right, very clearly on the, can't miss it.
All right, I got it. Thank you for bringing that up.
Right. So if, if, you know, if there, there are streams, there's watercourses and wetlands. Any development that would occur there, the wetlands, the Water Course Inspector would, of course, um, ask for that to be delineated. And uh, and if, if it ever came for a subdivision, the same would be asked for by the Planning Board. But at this point, this is just a lot line revision with no uh, no development.
I have no objection to it.
According to my information, that is New York State Wetland, not Hudsonia only.
No.
So it's got more designation. I mean, I don't know where I get that information from all, all the time, but.
The DEP owns, if I'm not mistaken, the DEP owns everything across all the wetlands across the road, uh, across Wittenberg Road, or that, that big pond, whatever that's called. It's got a name.
Oh, New York City.
Little Beaver. It's a Little Beaver kill, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
New York City, New York City owns all that stuff already.
Yeah, massive wetlands, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, um, if nobody else has any questions about it, we have at the end of our meeting tonight to pass the resolution regarding this, so. If nobody else has any issues on that, we will move on to the next case, if I'm a headache schedule, let's see. Wish to applaud you, Peter, on your explanation of that. It's, it's complicated and you'll see at the end, we have a, a, a sketch plan review of something quite similar with, with three parcels and different lot lines.
We, we forgot to open the public hearing, so we could just open and close.
I see. Then, uh, I have a motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if, uh, Melissa, if there were no letters or calls regarding this?
A few people asked for the file. It didn't seem many one. Anybody is here? And if they want to speak up, they can now, or forever hold your peace.
Okay, anybody, okay, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
First, I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Stuart, want to approve the application?
You want to do it now or at the end? We can do it now if you wish.
Well, the resolution is later, but approve the application.
Okay, uh, make a motion, entertain a motion to approve the application.
Yep, perfect. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Perfect.
So do you, do you need a, Kristen and I and company to stay till uh, you pass the resolution?
We do not. Robert, next week I'll talk to you and I'll get all the hard copies and we'll get them signed and keep you moving. I'll send you out the resolution.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Take care. Thank you, Robert.
Thanks. Okay, bye-bye.
Well, we're a few minutes ahead of schedule, um.
You know, I never know how to time these things.
Judy. Faster online than we did in person.
What's that, Judy?
I think we moved faster online than we did in person.
Very, that's very, very true.
And I never know what's going to come up. So with these public hearings, I think to cut them small, like shorter time, and then I'm like, oh, uh-oh.
What I'll do is I'll get into the next case and I won't open the public hearing for a few more minutes.
Perfect.
The, the next case is constantly awesome, LLC. And it's SUP case number 20 dash 0579. And this is a public hearing, virtual public hearing for a special use permit for an application for transient use of two apartments in the HC zoning district located on 17 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. And I, we've reviewed this several times before. It's two apartments upstairs over the bar restaurant. I believe that we discussed parking and I believe that the building inspector has approved uh, everything required for it. And is that true, Melissa? We have pretty much covered everything in there?
Yes. The only reason they're really in front of us is because of the short-term rental law and they fell under a weird situation.
Okay, um, so a minute early, uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so um, is there anybody in the public that has questions or issues with this application? That would like to ask questions?
I didn't have any responses on the public, the contiguous neighbor notices. Nothing.
Okay, well.
And Jenny's here, I think. Is Jen here? Ahearn? Yay!
I'm not Jen Ahearn. I'm a different one.
Oh, okay. I got all excited.
Well, you can still say yay for me.
Hi, Jen. Okay.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, me too. All right, well, I am definitely ahead of the next public hearing, so.
You want to approve the application pending draft resolution?
Okay, um, do I hear a, a, a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me too, aye.
You can approve my minutes.
Say again?
Approve the minutes.
We don't, we don't waste time in this planning board.
Okay, the minutes, right. We have the minutes from uh, December 17th. Does anybody have any questions or changes to those minutes that they'd like to make?
I do not.
No.
So if not, then um, I suggest that we approve and adopt the minutes as written. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Anybody on the board have any pressing issues they want to use up the next few minutes on?
No, I, I have to step away for a moment, so this seems opportune. I'll be back in two minutes.
Hey, Connor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Connor, by the way, I was working up on the, on the High Rocks today, which is, you know, the Hail Mountain Road. And what a view I had of uh, the Woodstock Valley and the Meads Mountain and everything. And I was able to see all buildings that were visible and clearings that were visible. And it made, and I took some pictures, but it made me think that it's a great uh, view to look at the overall uh, mountain view of the town of Woodstock.
That's a great, it could, like, as a sort of reference to say, like, this is, you know, how, we want, let's keep it as close to this moving forward as possible.
Yeah, I, it, it's, it's a good reference. I think that uh, you know, we should take some professional pictures, maybe with a drone or whatnot. I was on private property surveying, so I don't know if we could go on their property, but with a drone, you could get up there and if we got some nice panoramas of, of what the mountainsides look like now, it might help when we do, you know, scenic overlay uh, applications to.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that sounds like a great idea to do, you know, periodically, maybe, you know, once a season, every few years or something, just to keep tabs on the uh, on the development. And uh, that sounds wonderful. Um, I, I don't know if I mentioned to everyone, but I did send the pic, the aerial photos of my home to Melissa, which I am uh, giving permission to be used as templates, you know, to sort of uh, achieve uh, in turn, so we don't have people confused about exactly, you know, what the scope of what we're asking for is. But if you want to, I'd be happy to ask uh, David Lacks for a quote, if and when you are ready to uh, to pick a spot to uh, to fly directly up from.
Right. It'd be a great, uh, you know, point of reference to have.
I think so too. I totally agree.
We also got a lot of, you know, hill shadow and topographical information in the materials from Ingrid.
Oh.
Very detailed stuff.
Very good.
I will be right back, everyone. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Um, still have a few minutes uh, before the next public hearing. Uh, as I, as I said, that we, in the sketch review coming up, it's, it's another one of these lot line revisions uh, involving several lots and several lot line changes. And as I was discussing with Melissa, you know, before the pandemic, when we were doing this on Zoom, we used to have the plots, which were 36 by 24 big maps of the, of the proposals. Uh, and then we'd lay them on the table and everybody would bang heads together and, and point at this and this and that and, and uh, and look at everything. And now we're having to do it on a small screen. And it's very difficult to see which lot lines are being deleted and which one are being added. The, the maps themselves are correctly drawn and they're done professionally. Um, they're done with the county ones. But at the scale we look at it, um, you can't really see where it says lot line to be deleted unless uh, you know, Judy brings it up and can zoom in on those things.
Well, I can.
Uh-huh, because if you just look at, at the whole thing, it's very difficult to see, you know.
Just for this purpose. And I have the maps. So you're 100% right.
Well, what I was doing before with the uh, with the one we were looking at, I was zooming in and I can move it around. So we could definitely do that. What I have for this one that's coming up in the next few minutes is the ArcMap stuff.
Oh, great.
But I, but I plotted it. We can see all three properties. Wait a second and I, I can show it.
Okay.
That's it.
Yep, yep, that's the one. Millard Lane. Yep.
And you know, I don't have who owns what, but I can, I can find that out very easily just by looking at this.
You see, what you're showing is very helpful because now you can see the three original lots very clearly. You can see the small one on the top and the one to the west and the one to the east.
Right.
It makes it clear to see. You can see the one on the top, you know, has the house and the one uh, to the west has the farm and the horses and whatnot. And the one to the right is, is vacant land. So.
And um, this is the most recent, this is 2019 uh, parcel map, so mostly connect them up. And this is the most recent, this is 2019 parcel map, so mostly connect them up.
Very good, very good.
I'm sorry, it's 2020. It's even more recent than I remember. I got it quite a week, a few weeks ago.
Okay. All right, well, I'll begin the next case and I'll wait a few minutes to open the public hearing. But the if you want, Judy, you can actually put up the next case on, on your screen, which is the.
Carollis?
Carollis.
Yep, Carollis subdivision, correct.
Yep. Can you see it?
Yep.
I did not bring up this part, but you can see the, you can see the wetlands.
Yes, on the other side of the road, right.
Right, and this is the one that's on the property.
Right.
Remembering that the lines are not in the exact right place, Mr. Carr.
Well, he has had the wetlands mapped and is on his plot and and so and his plot, he has the wetlands and the buffers and showing that the house is outside of that. So, the next case is Rodrigo and Maria Carollis, the planning board case 20-1137C. This is a virtual public hearing for a subdivision application of a 10.51 acre lot into two parcels of 7.51 acres and three acres in the R3 zoning district. And it is located at 207 John Joy Road in Woodstock. And Charles Holtz is the surveyor who will be representing. So.
Rod's here. He's, he's doing his own thing.
Okay. All right, so that's the situation. It's a, it's a 10 acre plot. And the subdivided piece is three acres and it's in a three acre zone. And the, on his plot shows the wetlands and the 100-foot buffer. And where his house is located in the northeast corner of the lot. And I don't know if you can get the map up, Judy. Do you have his actual plot?
Uh, no, I don't think I do.
Okay, well, we've all seen it before.
Unless it was sent to me in the past and I just didn't.
Yeah, a long time ago. Yeah, we.
Yeah.
A long time ago.
Sorry, I'll.
So before I open the public hearing, does any member of the planning board have any questions regarding this application?
Peter, this is Stuart here.
Hi, Stuart.
How you doing? Just in case I misheard you, did you just say there's a house on the northeast corner of?
Proposed, proposed.
Proposed house, right. Okay, I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's the whole gist of that one.
Stuart did her site visit for this one. Thank you, Stuart.
You're welcome.
You know, I think I've got the drawings for that. I think I just found them.
Oh, good.
So if you give me a second, I can download them. There's not enough room on the disk to save it. I wonder if it'll open it. Nope. I've got a bit of a problem here. I don't think I better try to do that. I'm not even sure where the, where the Zoom meeting is open at the moment. But if you still see this.
We've, we've all seen it. You know, we had two, we've had two sketch reviews of it. It's a, it's a pretty simple lot. So I'd entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
So moved. Aye.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so is there anybody in the public that has any questions regarding this application? And Melissa, have you got any letters or phone calls regarding this application?
I had a few people request the file and I believe there are some people here, if they do wanna speak, now would be the time, but I had no official comments.
Hi, this is Vladimir. We are potential buyers for the 7.51 of this 10 lot split. And we're planning to build a house, so I just wanna make sure that that process will go, go as smooth as I'm seeing the rest of the things that it goes here, obviously, goes through the entire process, but that's our expectations as we, as we do it.
Right, well, once the planning board approves the subdivision, then it's the building department you go to for your building application. We, the planning board doesn't deal with that, but.
Got it.
Once the subdivision's approved, then you can apply to the building department for your billing permit.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, that seven acres doesn't have wetlands on it too, right, Peter? So he shouldn't run into any problems with that one.
Right, no, he's good.
Uh, wait a minute. Peter?
Yeah?
Yes, this is Stuart. I'm not sure that's correct. I think the wetlands do extend at the, in the larger parcel and in fact, Mr. Carollis pointed them out to me when, when we went up there.
But that's the larger parcel. Mr. Vladimir is buying the smaller parcel.
Yep, he's buying the.
No, 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 we're buying the bigger one.
He's getting the bigger one, he says. It's 7.5, right?
7.5.
My understanding is there's wetlands up there as well, so. I don't have the map in front of me, though.
The lower, the lower part.
Yes, the lower part.
I, yeah, yeah, I just opened up something that I didn't intend to open up here.
Stuart, this is Brian. Do you see any issues for your site visit?
Well, that's already been discussed. The 7.51 parcel is not being proposed for development at this point. The gentleman is saying he wants to build a house, but that has to go to the building department. My, my, I only, I only reacted because my recollection is that there's wetlands on both parcels.
I'm glad you did. I, but the zoning enforcement officer went to the property before we got it and the planning board was who made the wetland, delineated, not the building department. So I don't foresee you guys having any problem building a house.
Let me clarify. This upper part is a Hudsonia identified wetland and it is around an intermittent stream according to Hudsonia. The lower part is New York designated.
The point, my point is that Mr. Carollis pointed them both out to me and I just want the record to be accurate that my recollection is that, that there's wetlands on both, that's all. I don't want there to be a misstatement about it.
Right.
Perfect.
So when, let me put it this way, when the applicant goes to the building department to get a building permit, the building inspector is also the wetlands and water course inspector and would, and would instruct the applicant where they could or could not build.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much for clarifying, everyone.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so entertain a motion to accept the application as presented.
I move to approve it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
So now we get back to the next lot line revision.
Do we want to explain to Mr. Carollis that there's a formal resolution process to follow or does he understand that?
I can't see anything because I, all I see is Judy's screen, but he's here. I don't know if he knows how to unmute himself, though.
I just wanna make sure he understands what the process is going forward, that's all. Usually there's a statement to the applicant about it.
Yep. Hey, Rod.
Hi there.
I know you've been through this before, but the planning board wants to make sure that you know that sometime next week you'll get a resolution in the mail and then you and I will talk and we'll go back and forth.
I understand that.
Thank you.
I wanna thank everybody and have a good night.
Melissa, you, Melissa, you can in fact get the people who are watching overlaid on part of the screen share. If you go up in the upper right-hand corner where it says view, there are things you can manipulate.
Okay.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm representing the couple that's purchasing the seven plus acres. Would it be a good idea for me to go prior to the purchase to talk to the building department about where they could build?
Always a good idea. Certainly, certainly, you know.
On the Carollis?
Building.
On the Carollis grant, land, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a sketch plan review. And this is between three parcels and three owners. And it is between Kerry Mellert, Christopher Donahue Jr. and Richard and Susan Mellert. And this is planning board case 20-0187A. And this is a sketch plan review of a lot line revision to transfer 14 acres from Kerry Mellert's, which is originally 24.7 acres, to Donahue, which is originally 2.7 acres. And then there's 2.5 acres to Richard and Susan Mellert. And which was originally 11.26 acres. Resulting Kerry Mellert's parcel located at Mellett Road being 7.9 acres. Christopher Donahue Jr.'s parcel located at 29 Mellett Road being 16.8 acres. And Richard and Susan Mellert's parcel located at 4143 Mellett Road being 13.8 acres. And it's represented by Christopher Donahue. And we have now on the screen what it looked like before the lot line revision. So as you can see on the top, there's a two acre parcel. And to the west, to the left, is the smaller parcel and to the right is the undeveloped larger parcel. So now Judy, is it possible to get up the plot that we have on this?
That we just got? Yeah. Uh, I gotta find, let's see.
Is, is Chris here? I don't know if he's joined our meeting.
I'm here.
I'm sorry, this is the stang. I don't know that I got that.
Okay, I actually have it, but.
I don't need to do anything else.
Do you have it on your computer?
You can hold it up, oh, but you can't see me.
Well, I can take this off if you want me to. Let me take this off.
I can get it up here. Oh, I lost it.
I'm gonna try a screen share and show you the plot, okay, Peter?
Fantastic.
There's a blue dot that says share down in the right-hand corner after you open the screen share and you have to hit that also.
Yeah, I know. I've done, I did this before.
I always forget to do that.
This, everybody knows where this is. This is along the Sock Hill. Just sort of below a little deep, actually across the way from Judy's house. If you all know where Mellett Road goes across the bridge. There you go, there it is.
Judy, how do I flip it?
Oh, you'd have to flip it in the, in whatever software you're looking at. It won't, it won't do it.
If you go up to view to the left, it says file, edit, view. Do you see it? Maybe because I'm screen sharing, it's not there.
It's there.
Weird, I see it from here.
Okay, tell me.
Do you see the folder that says open?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just above that it says view.
Oh, that one.
Yep, just rotate.
Ah, I'd forgotten you could do that. Thank you.
Is it upside down? It is. Yep, you'd have to do it two more times probably.
And a one, and a two.
I know. There you go.
Yeah.
One more time.
Guys, we're just learning it all right now.
It's okay.
Thank you for bearing with me.
Good job.
You got it.
So now you see in the upper left-hand corner where it says Christopher F. Donahue, that's the original two acre lot. And you'll see the shaded road going along the bottom of it. That's the lot line that's gonna be deleted. And then you'll see beneath the shaded road, the new lot line. So that that two acre lot is now being increased. And so that's the first part of the subdivision.
You can eat your dinner.
Lot line revision. And then where the farm is, the horse farm and the barns and the houses, there's a lot line that's being deleted, sort of a curvy lot line that's being deleted. And to the right of that, a new lot line going in. And that's where they're getting their added acreage. And then way to the right-hand side, there are two new lot lines along the creek and that is the newly reduced lot. So, the applicant is here, correct?
Yes.
If you would like.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Chris, how you doing?
Good.
If you'd like to tell the board and the public what your objective here is.
Okay, so this was the Mellert Farm and my mother was a Mellert and she had three brothers. When my grandmother died, they left the farm to all four, all four kids. And 45 years ago when she died, they, there was one brother who was still living at the farm, so they left the farm to him. And then they were supposed to, when he sold the farm, give every, all four people equal shares, but he never sold the farm and over the, I think it was the next 10 or 12 years, he sold a portion of the farm to his younger brother, Richard, who owns the farm, the house and the barns where the horses are now. But they never settled the original agreement that my grandmother had, so they pushed it off to the last 24 acres that's left. Over the next 30 years, four of them have passed away. And there's just my uncle, Richard, is left and the 24 acres that's, that's left was supposed to be now, is supposed to settle the original agreement from 45 years ago. And my cousin Kerry, the, the last part way in the back, the piece that she's taking, her father wanted her to have, which is why she ended up with that piece, but she can't afford all of the land and she can't afford to pay everybody off for the land. So what we've come up with is since I order her and my uncle borders her, we're moving lot lines to satisfy our portion of the farm and then this, the section in the middle, the 14 acres in the middle, I'm buying from her so that she then can get money and pay off my other uncle siblings. So basically, this is the agreement we all kind of came up with so that everybody was satisfied and we can settle this estate from 45 years ago.
Quite a story.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Peter, you want, you want to summarize what we just heard? I'm just kidding. I do have a question, though. I do have a question though. Uh, uh, all the interested parties, are they all on the application as consenting to this?
They, they all signed Chris to be their representative.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have questions about this application?
I didn't know there were horses over there. How cool.
Oh, yeah. Nice horses. Nice stream too. Beautiful part of the stream.
Well, theoretically, those of us in the Lazy Brook subdivision have the right to walk along the south side. But you have to get down the scramble first and I can't do that.
All right, well, if nobody else has any questions, um, then, uh,
I have one other question, Peter. I'm sorry. Um, this is my first time looking at this, um, map, but are there houses on all of the pieces involved? And do they all, will they all still have access out to the public road after the subdivision?
Yeah, Mellett Road comes in, uh, as you can see on the far left. And then the shaded area is a road that is the, uh, right of way that gives access, uh, to the land furthest to the right.
Right.
So everybody has road access off of Mellett Road.
Chris's parcel and Richard and Susan's parcel are both established and they have, Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is how I understood it. And Kerry's is basically just land.
Yes. There's no house on, on the 24 acres.
Ellen had described that pretty well in her
Okay.
abbreviation.
All right, well, um, so Melissa, I guess if you can just set up with Chris a, a time for a public hearing, I, if there's no other issues, I think this can go to a public hearing.
Sounds good. Chris, I'll be in touch, uh, in the next few weeks and we'll set a date for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Chris.
Thanks.
Hi Stuart, um, we have some, uh, unfinished business. We have several, uh, resolutions to, uh, draft, draft resolutions to adopt. Would you mind, uh, bringing them up for us?
Not at all. Um, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolutions as drafted for the following cases. Uh, first case is staying in Machanis, planning board case number 20-0995A. Second case is the application of Constantly Awesome LLC. Special use permit case number 20-0579. And the third is the, um, well, has the Caroas resolution been drafted yet?
Yes, you guys got it.
Okay, um, so the third, uh, item to be approved is the draft resolution in Caroas, planning board case number 20-1137C. And also to approve the resolution is drafted in Byer and Samuel's special use permit case number 20-0580. That's the motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now for our favorite part of this is the STRs.
I can spare Peter and I'll read them.
Okay. Melissa, you got it. You got the STR mission.
I tried to, I just want to tell you guys, I tried to like, obviously you know I put a lot of brain power into this and work into this. I realized today when I went to do it, I'm not going to be able to mail them probably until like mid next week or the end of next week just because I have to finalize all those resolutions, which isn't going to be easy to do on a Friday when I'm only here for an hour or not at all. So the dates will change a little bit, but we're going to get this system rolling and we're going to move them and, and move them back to the building department, planning board. Okay, so we're making a motion to adopt, adopt draft resolutions for the short-term rental cases under the executive order. Including first go around, Harris, SUP number 19-0504. Blalock, SUP number 19-0509. Lombardo and Sumrell, SUP number 19-0503. No Wiki, SUP number 19-0517. Dura Lemon, SUP number 19-0525. Patton, SUP number 19-0515. Sue and Hart, SUP number 19-0530. Rotcoff, SUP number 19-0518. Hastings, SUP number 19-0502. And Russell and Klow, SUP number 19-0531. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Motion.
Beautiful. Second.
Second. Oh.
Perfect. All?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna have them for a while, but I'm gonna get out as many as I can every meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. That's, that was painless.
I told you.
Hey John, how'd you like that?
Very good. You like that, um, moonrise picture?
I do. So another year 2021, everyone that's here is staying with us and I want to thank you for another, another year to come. We're doing good stuff.
Thank you for your good work and for the holiday card. Much appreciated.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you so much for the card, Melissa.
You guys are welcome. I appreciate all of you.
All right, that's a great job, everybody. Anybody have any, uh, questions or additions?
Who's the guy standing in for Connor Wank tonight? Oh, it's Connor.
I'm back, right?
I didn't recognize.
I fit, yeah, you thought it was a, it was a reflection, right?
That's the new look.
Yeah.
Quite a hairdo.
Rocking his shirt. Thanks.
Tell us about it.
You might say it's the most.
Well, we'll see if that's permitted in the scenic overlay. I don't know.
That's a scenic overlay all by itself.
Very good. Not, not the way I waxed it, I'll tell you that.
Oh.
We can draw and photograph of it.
Every time I drive north on Xena Road and I see those white houses up on the mountain, it's just like, mm.
It's not a violation, it's Connor. By the way.
No, 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 these are old. These are obviously grandfathered.
No reflection Connor, no reflection.
They are actually the reason for the scenic overlay.
And that's what I thought I heard, yeah.
By the way, none of this goes into minutes.
No, I'm not writing.
Two, two things. One, I'll hit it with the 600, make the planning board happy. I don't think I could have a higher honor than to get roasted by the planning board. So thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna bring my sunglasses to the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, everybody. Well, let's keep plugging through the pandemic. Stay healthy and well.
Be healthy.
You too.
And, uh, motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
All in favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Be sad.
Well, thank you.
Good night.
Melissa?
Yes?
I will start saving those things when you send them to us so that I can access them.
No worries. Between you and I, we get it done.
Yep. Bye.
Thank you guys.